Hello, like to welcome everyone to the January twenty second, two thousand and twenty five, Cottonwood Heights City Planning Commission Business Session. So happy to see everyone here. Thank you for your attendance and attention to what's going on here. Couple of items on the agenda tonight. We have a business item and then also consent agenda for planning commission minutes. The first item I'll just ask is if there's any expertise communications or conflicts of interest that we need to disclose? No? No from me either? Okay, great. Hearing none, we'll move forward. The first item on the agenda is general public comment. This is a time to make comment about something, an item, if it's not on the agenda. I'll just stress that again. If it's not on the agenda, this is the time to make public comment. If you're here to make public comment about the item on the agenda, wait until that time. There will be a time specifically when we are discussing that item. Is there anyone that's here to just do general public comment? Please go ahead and come on up and when you're up here, we'll ask you to state your your name and then you have three, three minutes. And I am just going to say the expectation is to have decorum here tonight. There is no clapping or booing or anything before, after, or during commentary. And with that being said, I'll go ahead and say, do you, if if you could state your name and you are here just public comment, not about the agenda item?
Both, but the comment is general.
Okay, great. Thank you. If you could state your name, please.
Robert Farnsworth. You want my address?
No.
Okay. Just a basic general comment, reading the code, quite honestly. You've adopted the I T E manual parking generation, but it's not available to the public, so we can't read it to see what the code says. I think if the planning commission is going to adopt a code, we should be able to have access to it. And that's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for just general public comment? Okay, seeing none, I'll close out that section of the agenda. We will move now to business item three point one, which is project C U P two four dash zero one nine and S U B dash two four dash zero zero eight. Public hearing and potential action on a request by Nathan Anderson for conditional use permit and preliminary plat approval to construct a ten unit live work town home development at thirty four twenty five East Bengal Boulevard. We'll start with staff presentation.
Hey, you'll bear with me while I share my screen to the Zoom. That will hopefully bring it up on both sides here for anyone who wants to follow along. Are you guys hearing me at a good volume?
Yes, thank you.
Great. Okay, so we did go through these slides in the previous meeting, but if it's okay with the chair, I think it'd be good to go through them again.
Absolutely.
We have some different activities than this one, so want to make sure everyone has the information. Okay. Sorry, sometimes it wants me to click through them and other times it wants me to key through. There we go. Okay, so a little bit of project summary. Some of that was given when you read the agenda item, but I'll just kind of reiterate. This is a project that has two different actions encompassed in it. So they're requesting conditional use permit and they're requesting preliminary subdivision plat approval. The same information here is is what was included in that agenda with a little bit of added info about the zoning. So the property is zoned neighborhood commercial and the acreage is zero point four eight acres. And then the image to the right, people recognize as the aerial image. That shows Bengal Boulevard at the bottom of the screen. That's south. And then Oak Shadow Circle to the left of the the picture, that would be west. This aerial image just gives a little more context. I imagine most people are familiar with where this site is if they've come out to hear about it tonight, but it's toward the eastern end of Bengal Boulevard, just below Wasatch Boulevard. It's across from that, the Smith Shopping Center. Informally, we'll call it that. Kind of just below thirty fifth east. And then here is a a street view of the property, which people may recognize more. It was a Wells Fargo Bank for many years. That building is still standing, but the bank location has closed, so property is now listed for sale. And then this is a zoning map that shows the zoning of the property. Again, that's neighborhood commercial. That's represented by that bright pink color. So the subject property, let me see if my cursor will follow, is right here in the blue outline. Pink and then obviously the Smiths across the street, that that commercial area is also pink. That's neighborhood commercial. And then the surrounding parcels are primarily a few different residential zones. So R one six, R one eight, and R two eight are nearest. All right, now with the context of where we are in the city and what the zoning is, let's talk about the request. So this proposal is a live work town home development. Again, it's got two different components. The conditional use permit is required because live work developments are conditional uses. And then the subdivision component is required anytime you're dividing property, which separate units would be a division of property. This site plan here just gives a little bit of a, an overview of what's being proposed on the site. So we see two different flanks of five units each. Got that central drive aisle up the middle and then some of that surface parking that was a big topic in our last meeting is to the north. Here. Talking a bit about the use, it is again a live work town home development. We've, we've talked about that, that yes, this isn't allowed use in the underlying zone. Live work developments are allowed as conditional uses. Exactly what a live work development is varies by jurisdiction. Cottonwood Heights does not have a definition in its code for for our specific parameters on these. In the absence of a local definition, we defer to definitions from the planner's dictionary. A couple of those are listed here. It's the director's discretion on which is used and the director, it sounds like, has selected to use the first definition for for what that is. I'll just read that since it's a little small on the screen. I think that definition says a live work development is a dwelling unit combining residential use types with commercial or limited industrial use types. This use classification includes but is not limited to office, live work facilities, and other similar uses. But again, we don't have in our code specifications for live work, such as how many square feet the work component needs to be or what it needs to be. So it's, it's sort of a vague conversation when this comes up. In terms of what the applicant's proposing, they are proposing that the live component is obviously the town homes and then the ground floor office space would be the work component. And they're proposing that that would just be used by the tenants of those town homes. Does this combination comply? That's of course a relevant question. In the absence of a local definition that has specific regulations on what counts and the square footage, the proposed combination here has been found to be compliant with code, both in this project and in past precedent projects. We've, we've had a couple of these come up before with this same use breakdown. And I'll just say if it's, if it's desired to have more local regulation or clarity on that, a code update might be something we consider to make that more clear. Project density, of course, is a huge topic. They're proposing that it's ten, uh, ten units on just under half an acre, point four eight. Some of the zoning ordinances in Cottonwood Heights will list a really specific, clear density ratio where, for example, the mixed use zone says the maximum you can have is thirty five units per acre. The general plan, which is kind of the guiding document for the city generally and and the biggest master plan we have, specifies the density bandwidth for different residential zones. So those things both exist, but they don't exist for the neighborhood commercial zone. So the zoning ordinance for neighborhood commercial, as well as the general plan, don't list that neat and tidy thirty five unit per acre number or the equivalent. So without that, the city looks at other development parameters to assess if this project is compliant. And those include the, the constraints like setbacks, height, parking, et cetera. And, and that kind of informs what can go in there. So on the note of setbacks, this diagram here just takes the site plan that was submitted to the city and puts some labels in blue, so it's a little easier to see. The front setback, which would be the south property line, so adjacent to Bengal Boulevard, that needs to be twenty five feet. They're providing twenty five. The west side, so that's adjacent to Oak Shadow Circle, needs to be twenty five. They're providing twenty five. The east side, so that's adjacent to the, the LDS ward house, needs to be ten. They're providing ten. And then the rear side, which is the north, needs to be twenty five. They're, they're providing just over that at twenty eight. So the setbacks do meet the minimums that are outlined in our code. And then the, the maximum height in feet is thirty five. That's what's allowed by code. Thirty feet is proposed. And I'll just note maybe on that, because it may be a question that comes up, height is measured from existing grade. Okay, outdoor lighting. The city has an outdoor lighting ordinance. This project's photometric plans comply with that ordinance, except for two, two different facets. The site lumens and the property boundary illumination. That would need to be corrected. We've recommended a condition for that. So we can get more into that if there's any questions on it, but that's the overall compliance there. And then similarly with landscaping, it does comply with the city's landscaping standards, including including those for like landscaping components. So what's being planted, water wise landscaping. Some of the specifications for landscaping in the zone don't apply to the project due to the property size and the proposed use. Happy to answer questions about that code if needed. Fencing is another big one. So the applicant's proposing four foot fencing around the private yard areas for each unit. You can kind of see it in that rendering. I've drawn a blue circle to try to, try to make it clear. It's, it's hard on the screens. But they aren't proposing new site fencing to be built. And we talked about that in our last meeting. They, the plans they submitted to us do indicate they plan to keep the east side. So that's the site adjacent to the LDS ward house. Block retaining wall and chain link fence, and then the north side block retaining wall and wood fence. Well, our code doesn't require site fencing. The commission could add a condition of approval for fencing if it, if they feel that would be an appropriate measure to to mitigate a negative impact. That's, fencing is a common condition that's looked at. So we talked about that a bit. Parking is a huge one, and I'm just going to really quick grab my water before I keep talking. Sorry. Thank you. Okay, so we use the I T E parking generation manual, as was mentioned in our first public comment. The code doesn't specify specific parking requirements for visitor parking. That's not like a category called out. So when we first look at parking, we're looking at what's required for the dwelling units and what's required for the office space. And of course, the commission had some lively discussion about is this the right way to do it? Are there other metrics we should be considering? I'm just going to get into kind of what's here and then I, I imagine you all will take the conversation from there about your deliberations. So the code requires for the dwelling units that thirteen stalls be provided. The proposal provides twenty in those two car garages. And then the office space, based on square footage, requires three and they're providing four. So those numbers do comply with the I T E manual. A traffic study was provided when they submitted the project. That's not something that we review as planners, but it was something reviewed by our engineering department. The traffic study noted that what's called the level of service or L O S is maintained at the same level. So that's not to say things don't change because the development comes in, but the level of service is maintained at a C grade, which is found to be acceptable by, by the city standards. I will note that the engineering department had some comments that during any technical review process that follows a planning commission decision, potentially, that study does need to be updated to verify that the onsite parking spaces required in that manual are sufficient for the context of the site and also verify compliance with ADA standards. And if addressing those items affects the layout or the nature of what is perhaps approved by the planning commission, an applicant would be required to return for revised approval. So we do see that happen from time to time. Bit more on parking. So we've talked a bit about how city code doesn't say, here's the requirements for visitor parking. But we do have a concern as staff that visitors may try to park on the neighboring cul-de-sac, which is Oak Shadow Circle. That's to the west of the project. This is a public right of way, so by default today, it allows public parking. But it has a single point of ingress and egress as a cul-de-sac. It's a relatively narrow width and a short length. And we do find that an excess of parking on this right of way could create a disproportionate negative impact on these homes. So we talked about in our last meeting, we've recommended a condition of approval that, that town home visitors not be allowed to park on that cul-de-sac, that signage would need to be installed that specifies that. Of course, the commission had some discussion about, is that the appropriate condition? Is that a helpful condition? What's the best way to sort of mitigate parking impacts? So I imagine you will all pick that up again in this meeting. And then a bit about miscellaneous items. So no roof appurtenances, which is really roof mounted equipment, are being proposed by this project. They're proposing to use pad mounted utilities instead. These will need to be screened per the requirements in the code. So we've recommended a condition of approval to reiterate that requirement. In terms of snow removal, that's will be handled onsite privately. That's not something that the city's public works department would, would plow the site for them. They are required to provide snow storage. That's proposed at the north end of the development. And we have recommended another condition of approval that it not obstruct access of those surface parking stalls. And then let's talk about waste management. This was a really important topic you all hit on in your last meeting. I know it was a shared concern of many public comments. And I think we'll maybe have some questions for the applicant from the commission. But what they're proposing at this time is instead of using a site dumpster to utilize individual cans for each unit. So, so our code has requirements for dumpsters for how close they can be to residential properties, for screening requirements, but we don't, our code doesn't specify like standards right off the bat for individual cans. Some of the commission had done some very helpful research on what the, the waste management provider for the city requires. And I think you all will have some questions for the applicant about how they plan to mitigate that. Oh, and I'll just say so that, make sure everyone knows, they're proposing that those cans would be put on Bengal Boulevard on trash day for pickup. Okay, so public comment, we received many public comments. We use a deadline of noon the day prior to the meeting for any comments to be submitted to the commission in advance of the meeting, and that just gives the commission, hopefully, time to read them before the meeting. So we forwarded all of those and then it's scheduled for a public hearing. I know we've got some, some public comment to be shared tonight. So of course, when the time comes, the chair will open up public hearing for anyone interested. And then here are our recommendations and conditions. So we, we recommend approval of the project, but with these conditions. There's been a lot of discussion about additional conditions, alteration to these conditions, but this is kind of a starting point for you to discuss in your deliberations. And then when the time comes for a motion to be made, we have sample motions for approval for continuation and for denial. So those are the resources I have to share with you all tonight. Of course, I'm happy to answer questions from the staff perspective, but it's, it's not my project, so I imagine some of the expertise will come from the applicant themselves. Anything else from the commission at this point before I sit?
Okay. Thank you.
I'm going to leave the mic turned on. So for anyone who comes up next, the microphone is ready for you to go. And then maybe I'll just put the, maybe I'll just put the slide on that layout slide. And then if there are resources you guys want me to pull up for your discussions, just direct me and I can get you to the right screen.
Perfect.
Okay, thanks so much.
Thank you. Okay, now.
It's just my mouse. No one worry. I think we're gonna just let that one go for now. Oh, thanks, guys.
Cut the mouse.
Oh, thank you so much. That's so kind. Wow, what a team effort.
Okay, at this time, we'll ask the applicant to come forward and present and also be available to answer questions from the commission.
Hello, I am the applicant, Nathan Anderson, and thank you to Samantha for going through all the details.
Do you have a presentation or you want to, or would you just like to be available for us to ask you our questions?
I, I do have a presentation, but it's from a different, it's from a different standpoint. With my work as a construction lender and my work with the House Bill five seventy two with the Utah Legislature, it's, it's a task to provide, to try to provide some housing and development opportunities in various areas of Salt Lake County. My personal desire to develop this property was initially started by a more of a mixed use building. So some slight commercial on the first level, parking internal to the building and sixteen to eighteen units on the property in three levels. That would have provided for us an avenue to use House Bill five seventy two money at four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, making it very affordable for somebody to live there. But given the fact that my background in the construction and development business, I felt that that impact would be too great for the city and the residents nearby. So we backed off from eighteen of those units and using that five seventy two funding to accomplish that to ten live work town homes. So that's, that's what, that's what gets us here today. To try to have an avenue to get some people that have graduated from college in the working world wanting to move back to Cottonwood Heights, live close to where they grew up, an avenue to do so in somewhat of affordable manner. These live work town homes are for, we repeated them on, we did them first on Fort Union. We've done them in Salt Lake City twice. We've done the same thing in Mill Creek. They have performed very, very well. And after COVID, it was even at a higher level that they performed so well. It is not a live work commercial space. It is an office space. It would be the equivalent of any one of these residents turning one of their bedrooms into a desk, a filing cabinet, and running it as an office. The, there are no, the C C N Rs dictate that there are no patrons present on the properties. It is office use. And all of that office use in those areas that we have been familiar with and that have come to our attention is all digital commerce. There's no interaction. In fact, there is one gentleman that lives on Fort Union at eighteen hundred east that has a key fob business. And he had, in one year, he had a, an emergency delivery on the street for a key fob to a lady that had to have access to a car. Otherwise, all of his interaction commerce, all of his money collection was all done digitally. No one ever visited the site. So it's, it's a little bothersome to me when people are saying that these aren't, these aren't live work town homes. They're, they're ten individual operating commercial offices. That's just not the case. And there are plenty of examples to enforce or to prove that fact out. So they are for only the use of the owner of that town home. Anyway, I, I made my point for the live work portion. The, the parking portion of this, the garage portion of these town homes, they have been repeated over and over again. And they do have a twenty eight, or twenty nine percent slope in the stairway that enters into the garage and projects into the garage by about two and a half feet of the stairway cell. We use the lower portion of that stairway cell as an alcove to put the garbage can because we don't want it to conflict with the parking area in a twenty one by twenty one garage, of which I personally have a Toyota Tacoma that is a double cab and it has a long bed, six foot long bed and with a hitch on it. My truck fits in that garage with the door closed. There are examples, there are examples of people that have had Chevrolet truck and it was, it had wheels on it that were oversized. It was jacked up seven, eight to nine inches. It was a big truck. They do not fit in the garage door. The garage doors are standard sixteen foot wide. So it is two parking stalls. Everything is equipped to hold those two cars. Nothing subtracts from that. Garbage, garbage is a, garbage is a huge issue. We cannot let Ace Disposal enter the project with a vehicle that weighs empty twenty tons, full twenty five tons. You can't improve the road well enough to sustain that kind of weight, traffic, and damage that they cause. So it is picked up on Bengal Boulevard. It is twenty inches between each can because at Ace It is 20 inches between each can because at Ace, you'll remember seeing that can, it has the front bar on the front, on the lower section of the can. They pick it up from the front, not the side. And so we don't have, if we have 10 units, we don't have 20 cans on the front of the project. We only have 10 cans when they're picked up because the, the other containers, if the homeowner so wants it, because Wasatch Waste and Recycling will not provide receptacles to a PUD, only to a standard subdivision, single family home. So you are forced to go to an outside provider, and that is Ace Disposal, and they pick up the, the recycling once a month and not on the same day as the regular garbage. So there are only 10 cans and there's plenty of room out there. I wanted to pave a section with brick pavers like we did in other cities. We put brick pavers in between the sidewalk and the curb so you could have a place, a landing pad for those garbage receptacles. Here it is just grass. I would prefer that it is brick pavers. What else haven't I addressed? Fencing, 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 I cannot do anything with what the LDS Church has done on the east side. I have to leave it exactly the way it is today. The resident that I took over some information to the resident that sits to the north of us, and that block wall is in fantastic condition and will remain so as is. The, the fencing on the west, we will try to make a little bit better than what it is today by, that subdivision was built by Terry Sider and Suntree Properties back in 1996 through 1998. Some of the fencing, some of the wrought iron could be upgraded to make it look much better than it is today. The lighting fixtures on all the pillars have to be changed because most of them do not work. That said, I think that most of the fencing will stay to respect everybody's privacy from the residents to the west and the residents to the north. We will go beyond what you see in the landscape plan to plant oak, crimson oak spire trees every five and a half to six feet along the back, which would be the north and along the west, because those trees provide coverage year round for those people that live over on the other side of Oak Shadow Circles and for the residents here to protect them, to give them privacy. So those, those trees have leaves on them year round until the new growth in the spring replaces it. So it's vegetated year round. And we owe that to the people on the north and we owe that to the people on the west to maximize the privacy that we can. As to the townhome, the townhome itself is, is finished in high grade materials because of the area. It will be, it will be rather expensive. It's, it's unfortunate that we're in the times that we are today. And with new tariffs on the way, everything is going to get more expensive because the largest item in those townhomes is the lumber package. And because most of our lumber today comes from the boreal forests of Canada, that will add 20% on to these townhomes, which is, which is terribly unfortunate because the, the, I mean, if you, if you subscribe to the Salt Lake Board of Realtors and their information, they said in 2024, there were 91,000 new residents to the state of Utah. 91,000 between three, three, between three counties, Utah, Salt Lake and Davis, there were just over 11,000 building permits. That's what makes everything so expensive. Tonight, you're going to hear the residents come up here and claim that they don't want another car on the street, that there is not enough parking, that they do not want another child in the school. Cause I've, I've, I've done it for 33 years as a construction lender. You're in many, many planning commission meetings, but all of this results, all of this results in less housing product of all types on the ground. Less options equal higher prices for everybody all around. This, this is in an affordable category for Conwood Heights. Not but, not but three quarters of a mile to the east of this, you can buy a brand new single family home for 2.3 million dollars. I mean, it's just, the cost is just, the cost is excessive. And, and there's no end in sight because this, this product will have, this product will have 27 or 28 different companies come and provide services, materials and all of that. All of those companies unabated have raised their prices for 21 years in a row. And sometimes multiple times in a year. That's what's made everything so expensive. And the fact that you have to come here, you have to come here and you have to do, you have to do land surveying, you have to do civil documents, you have to do architecture, you need to do photometric, you need to do traffic studies, you need to do all of that to get here, to stand right here and ask this commission, this body, these people to just answer one question. My question. To expend over $30,000 to come here and ask but one question. May I please have a conditional use permit? Anyway, I've gone, I've gone, I've gone way off the, I've gone way off the beaten path. I'll answer any questions that you might have, but I, I, I come, I live from a different angle. And so I apologize if that's not what you wanted to hear, but they're all true facts.
Thank you for, for that presentation and information. I'll open it up to the commissioners for questions.
Yeah, thank you for being here. A couple of questions about operations within the site. What kind of management and HOA are you planning on putting into the site?
Well, there's a standard HOA and it will be governed, excuse me, by the CCNRs for the property. The CCNRs will govern what you can do with the live workspace. There's no renting, there's no, well, renting is, is one factor. There's no Airbnb business. There's no short term rental business. None of that will exist here. We got into situations in rental where we had an individual that had the unit and their parents fell ill, so they had to move several states away for two years to care for them and rented their property in the meantime. That situation has to be accommodated because of the courts demand that that is accommodated. Other than that, there is no rental business here. So.
What kind of amenities are going to be there for the residents of the property?
The residents of the property are going to get a yard with a townhome. They're going, it's, it's, it will start with six foot high fences between the units and then fall to four and then wrought iron in the front. Because everybody in a townhome, the, the major criticism is storage and privacy, privacy as to private outdoor space. That private outdoor space is crucial because what you're doing here is you're taking what a normal single family home would have at double the price and putting it in a very small package. And so that yard, because everybody has a child, a cat or a dog, it, it's indispensable amenity. And that's what we focused our attention on.
Thank you. As far as the live work component to this, what regulations is the HOA going to have over that? And is there going to be any onsite management? I know it's a smaller project, but will there be any onsite management?
No, no, there's an outside professional management company of HOAs that takes over and governs the CCNR as to the activities in the PUD.
Thank you.
When you talk about the, the capacity of the road, could you build the capacity of the road to tolerate the, I, I believe you could, but I just, I'm, you stated it was not possible. Is that just in the context of your current project to allow it to be available for Ace to put a dumpster in the back?
Well, we, we've had both, we've had both experiences. And collection areas, a garbage dumpster in an enclosed defined area with gates and locks and, and all that stuff, it's abused through the years and it's, it's, it's nasty. It's a, it's, people aren't kind with those dumpsters and, and it constantly has to be cleaned and maintained. And so it has worked much better if the garbage can is internal to the garage. The CCNRs, you can't leave the garbage can outside the garage. It has to be in your garage and it has to be taken to the street on that day that it is picked up by Ace Disposal. That by far has worked better over and over again. So we're going off past experiences of the residents that live there and the control that it has, the look, the smell, the delivery, all of it. History predicts what is done here.
Can I ask a follow up? On the, the east side versus the west side, just I, I saw the, the overlap as on your, your third story, it's kind of an overhang to add more space it looks like for that upper story. Is, is there going to be a, it looks like the setback on that, that east side with the, the current wall and the current ivy that's there, that, that looks like that's going to be pretty tight on that east side. Is there any clarity you can provide on kind of how you're going to handle the east versus the west?
From the front, from the foundation wall to the property line is 10 feet. So we're going to have small courtyards on that side, much larger courtyards on the west side. And that will be, there are people that don't want the vegetation and the care that it requires on the west side and they'll have it on the east side. Some small outdoor private area is more suitable to their liking than what would be on the west side with added space.
Commissioner Mills, can I add something that may help clarify as well? Are you referring to in the rendering like the cantilevered-ish area on the upper story?
Correct.
Yeah, so we did clarify with the applicant that that does count against setbacks. So I believe the intention was to update the articulation to remove that, but that rendering hadn't been updated. So I don't believe that would be a part of the project moving forward.
So you're telling me that it's 10 feet from the cantilever section, not from the base of the foundation, correct?
So it would have to be if they wanted to do the cantilever. And so I believe the applicant was opting to remove that cantilever instead, but they can provide clarity on that. I just wanted to.
I'm sorry, there was not an updated photo, but that, that is true.
Just wanted to clarify that from the, what counts against setbacks standpoint.
I appreciate that process wise. And the, the ivy that's growing up, I'm imagining that that was probably planted years ago. I, is your understanding that the wall is the proper property of the LDS Church?
The wall is, is split between the LDS Church and this property. The ivy is a, is a pretty good barrier. Two fences is not a good idea. We've had too many experiences with two fences side by side. All they do is collect debris and, and rodents. That's all. And so if the chain link, I can't remember if the chain link is on our side of the block wall on the east side. If it is, it'll be removed.
It's on the opposite side. So your, your side has the ivy and the, and the brick.
And the, and the rock wall.
With, with a little bit of, of this ivy doing what ivy does, pulling away at the mortar a little bit. So I guess my intention is that whatever agreement is worked out that from a maintenance standpoint that that, that will be remedied and assuming it's going to be pretty shaded there. So I just encourage you as you guys move forward, if this were to happen, that that, that's going to be a very, very unique space, a very, very shaded space and very different than that west side space.
As in removing it?
However you decide to determine what.
No, I, I agree. It should be controlled because it can, it can cause damage if it's let go, if it's overgrown.
And just being a good neighbor, I, I don't think it would be that difficult to figure out who you get contact over there. And I, I know they've been noticed by the city. I'm sure that's occurred, but I would just encourage that in the, in the name of being good neighbors to all those on all three sides. I, I also am curious if you, as in your interactions with the property owner on the north, it appears that there was an exception in terms of the, the easement for that home to the north and it's a, it's, it's quite, quite close. And I, can you speak to strategically how you hope to be a good neighbor to those on the north if this were to pass? I understand the idea of planting the trees, but you're in pretty close proximity, even by the drying. I don't know if the drying completely describes the picture. It's pretty close with windows facing out within probably six feet or less from the property line.
If, if you look at the rendering on the north side, we have limited the windows. There are a lot of windows that are up high for sunlight only and not direct view. The trees that we will plant, and there's, there's a fantastic examples of those in Mill Creek. They grow to a height of between 30 and 33 feet. So they're pretty significant and they grow together. So in, in other cities estimation, it is equivalent of a green wall. And that's the respect that we owe those neighbors to the north. And so, no, it won't be that way in year one, two and three, but in year four, yes, yes, sir, it will. And, and that's what we, that's what, if I were living there, that's what I would want.
I do, since you brought up the trees to the north, the north is where the proposed no storage would be correct. Would the planting of the trees block that area in terms of where the snow could go?
No, we'll take trees right up next to the, to both cutouts.
Okay.
So there will be a void there, but that's not, that's, that's further to the west and not a clear aspect to their home.
Right, okay. Thank you.
I have a question on the garbage. I'm hearing that Ace Disposal, is that who's going to be picking up the garbage cans?
Yes.
Or will, or, well, it's Wasatch Waste and Rec, and Recycling that pick it up in Conwood Heights that I'm aware of. So that's two different companies.
They, they, two years ago, two years ago, they took the time to read their guiding principles. And they found out that in their guiding principles, that any private development in Salt Lake County from 1978 on, they had the option to or not pick up garbage. It was a dramatic turnaround. When they issued notices to all of these PUDs, private developments, and there are a plethora of them, it was a whirlwind of arguments and lawsuits that they would not pick up garbage in these private developments anymore. And your development that is 10 years old is private and we will no longer pick up the garbage. You have a 90 day notice. And so you have to go with these five private companies, Metro Waste on down. Ace Disposal has been the best provider and by the way, the lighter trucks, their trucks empty only weigh 18 tons, full, they weigh 24 tons.
I'm, I'm still confused as to who is going to be picking up the cans that you're going to be putting.
Ace Disposal, Ace Disposal.
So then they, so then they won't have the same rules to abide by that Wasatch Waste puts out because it's a different company? Is that what I'm hearing?
That's correct. That's correct. Their, their instruction sheet to you provides that you will, you will meet a 20 inch separation between cans. So we have 10 cans and so five per side is more than ample space to pick those up. And once again, they have the front bar on the can and they don't pick it up this way. They pick it up from the bar in the front. So, so it's very accommodating, but, but. So, so it's very accommodating. But, but Dan, I've, I've got to back up. You had another question about, could I make the driveway sustain itself with those type of heavy trucks? You could if you went to 10 inches of reinforced concrete. Yes, you could do that, but it's cost prohibitive. That's what I, I apologize for not doing that.
So are, are there any details in regards to the trash removal within ACE? Are they able to pick up on a public road if it's in a planned unit development?
Yes.
Okay.
They, they do it.
And you had mentioned that it's a front load, not a side load. How do they pick that up on a, a public road?
Well, the arm is on the side of the vehicle. On the can, you'll see, you'll see a front kind of stainless steel metal bar embedded in the, in the handle grip just below it. That's where they grab onto the can. So when you were referring to the distance between the cans, you're referring to the capture system that has two arms that come in and pick up the can and deposit it. This one comes from below and grabs the, the rod that is embedded in the can and picks it up and throws it over the top. Both devices, both mechanical devices are on the passenger side of the vehicle.
Yeah, so what I'm hearing is two things. Then you're not going to use Wasatch Waste and disposal with the rest of Cottonwood Heights you're going to use ACE disposal?
Correct.
And then the other, I was hearing that they're going to pick up just once a month, the recycling.
That is correct.
Okay. I, I'm just curious, is that once a month recycling going to be adequate? And if it is not adequate, the cans become full before that? Ours does from time to time. Will there be an opportunity for them to come and, and get it on a date other than the one, once a month?
That I do not know, but what has come to pass in other PUDs is that that can picked up on a three-week or four-week basis has been ample. There hasn't been, there hasn't been any discussion, any argument, any problem, any trash overlay, any abuse of that. It has been facilitated and seems to work well.
I'm, I'm just curious because I know what goes in our blue can.
No, I, I know, I know, I know. I agree. I agree.
I don't study this.
I agree.
I'm just going on my experience.
I'm with you. In our home, if we had to go three weeks with a recycled can, it would be overflowing. When you have a daughter that's hooked on internet shopping, those things happen. But th- these people have adjusted their lifestyle and their life to accommodate that, and it seems to work well.
I know that, all I can say is under the Wasatch Waste recycling, which I assumed it was going to be, the plan wouldn't work.
I, I understand, but if, if you call them and you talk to Maria or Melissa, she's the head of the department, she'll, she'll, she'll tell you that in a, in a heartbeat. She really went through, she really went through turmoil trying to end long-term relationships of picking up garbage and saying, no more. That, she went through some really tough times with that.
Well, it just seems like there's a different set of rules between ACE and Wasatch, and that's not unusual, I'm sure. It's two different.
It, it's just two different, it's just two different mechanical systems that pick up the trash. That's, that's-
No, I understand what you're saying. My assumptions for my question was Wasatch would be-
Yes.
-up as it does in every other place that I'm aware of, other than commercial properties in-
Understood.
Thank you.
Any other questions from commissioners?
I have one last question. With your visitor parking, I worry a little bit. Can you address any just strategic ideas you have about ADA approaches for wheelchair users in your project?
Well, when McNeil Engineering designs the project, they design it to be ADA visitable. So the, the van that pulls in that needs approximately, I don't know, it's like four or five extra feet on side of the van. That is ADA compliance, not visitable. We have leveled all the sidewalks, leveled all the approaches, leveled all the courtyard patios. There is only one seal step into the unit, and so it is very visitable. To be ADA compliant would be something dramatically different. So we would have to go down to three parking stalls and have a landing pad in the other one, like we have done in a project in another city nearby. But we don't, we don't have, the, the town home is not built on compliance, it's built on visitability.
Just looking at the sidewalks coming in front of your visitor parking spaces, I just am trying to picture how somebody, a wheelchair user, might be able to navigate that. I just, the, the approach, I just, it's hard to even picture how that would be even manageable.
They just have to be, they have to be tapered down to the asphalt at the entrance.
I just see how, how you would possibly get around the vehicle to get to the sidewalks that are the, the access.
Well, there, there's, there's no, there's no doubt that it is tight for a full wheelchair to have accessibility in there.
I just have another question on parking, really. If people do any entertaining, invite family over, whatever, where are these folks going to park? You've only got four stalls. And they invite more than four folks.
Well, in-
Where do they park?
In this instance, there have been cars that have been parked on Bengal Boulevard, both on the north side and on the west side. So if they can park on that public street, I'm assuming that that is where they're going to park. We've had these, we've had these same conversations on other projects. And for the last one, Union at 18th East and Brook Hill Drive, those same comments. And the only time that we've ever had issues with parking was during a construction period. All the other time periods with all the residents that live there and all the things that they do, those parking stalls in and out on an everyday basis have served them well. And there hasn't been any, that, that they complain that the residents across the street park cars on the street that they never move. They don't go anywhere. They never move. They're there for weeks on end. That's the complaints that I've heard are from those residents on the opposite side of the street, leaving those vehicles that don't, they're not used on a daily basis. And so that's the complaints I've heard. Our parking has facilitated everybody's needs.
Seems like four is a little bit under for entertaining, but like-
Okay. Well, there, there, there is both sides of Bengal Boulevard.
Both sides?
Both sides have area that you could park on.
I'm, I'm, I'm only looking at four stalls in the back and possibly two cars in front.
No, no, I understand. You said if you had four more people come over and visit.
I'm just, multiple cars. I mean, we've had entertainment at our house that show up in six-rate cars and just, you know, they're parking everywhere in our driveway and whether, you don't have the option here, parking in the post driveway at all, there's, there's no place to park there. So I was just curious-
Understand.
What the plan was if there were more than four visitors.
If, if the overflow, then it would fall out onto Bengal Boulevard.
If two picked the same night out of 10.
Understood.
What, what is the current fire remediation? Is there going to be sprinkling in these buildings?
The properties don't exceed 30 feet, and that is the criteria for the fire department to be on the roof to put out a fire. There's shaft liners that are on both sides of the townhome going from the foundation through the roof deck. So that isolates any, any fire. And then if you're lower than 30 feet, that's the fire code. All that we've done, all that we've done on that project has been zoning compliant, fire compliant, right down to the landscaping compliance.
Can you tell me more about the zoning compliance within neighborhood commercial and your intent within neighborhood commercial?
The height, the setbacks on the side, the rear, and the front.
Okay. And then, and then as far as regulation of neighborhood commercial, do you feel like you follow all those steps within neighborhood commercial and the overall intent?
The regulation of neighborhood commercial regarding what aspect?
The, the commercial component to it and the live-work component.
Well, as I stated initially when I came up here, that the, the the commercial component, I, I hate to frame it as a commercial entity because it is a small bedroom. The reason that, the reason that that was developed is because during COVID and after, there were so many people that worked at home or, or a hybrid system, or they liked the advantage of that bedroom down there because it's separate from the living area. So somebody could, somebody could conduct business there and not be bothered by the rest of the activities of the family or the living unit. It's, it's isolated. And, and so they could go down there and feel comfortable conducting business, phone, computer, otherwise. And, and the CCNRs that govern the HOA and the prod, and the, and the building and the unit govern that live-work space. There's no, like I said, there's no patronage. There's no, there's no visitor on a daily basis wanting to conduct commerce in those townhomes, in that live-work portion.
So you're, you're saying your definition of it is that this is a space, a, a home office?
Yes, that's correct.
Basically. It's a, it's a home office.
That's correct. And in most cities, to have a home office, you need to go to the city and apply for a home occupation permit. I think it's all of $70. And that gives you the ability to conduct your day-to-day affairs there, Wi-Fi, phones, computers, all the rest.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have another question about elevation. Can you pull up the, the picture of the current property? I'd love for staff and the applicant to estimate just visually how high you think the current structure is there.
Do you want to see the street view, just to confirm, of the bank building?
Correct.
Okay, cool.
Correct. So I, I'm, we, we are grateful for the engagement of the public, but there have been a number of renderings showing just what would be there versus what is there now. So just an estimation, what do we think, how high do we think that is?
The apex of the roof, according to McNeil Engineering and then their device that they use to calculate the height, is 26.8.
26.8. And what are you hoping to be the final finished of any structure that will exist anywhere on any surface on the top of your project?
It's 29.9.
Okay. Then my other question is, there is a difference in grade. You heard me mention this before in the work session, tapering from north to south and also from the east to the west. And, you know, we've, we've watched in the city is what the current grade is. And do you have anything that will reassure the residents that there will not be an appreciable change? And how do you plan on dealing with that slope in both directions, from the northeast to the southwest?
Well, the site will be balanced. But if you drive in through that former Wells Fargo property, you'll find that on the east side, you're a little bit lower or almost the same as you are on the west. And you'll see in the west where you would have gone around an ATM machine, it really picks up high. And so you're almost, you're almost five feet above the finished grade of Oak Shadow Circle. And the reason that Wells Fargo, well, the reason First Security Bank did that is for drainage because it all drains to those central drains in the back on the north end. And then it percolates out from there. So they had to pick up all the flow from there and bring it to the back. And then you have one drain just before you exit out onto Bengal Boulevard that collects that final, I don't know, 15 or 20 feet. But other than that, they raised the grade to pull it back. We have to take that grade down to a level plane on the east and the west to match.
And that, that I think will reassure the residents. I, I might disagree in some of your assessment, but at the, at the end of the day, I'm just curious, is it going to be closer to the west or to the east, to the north or to the south? I think as the residents look at it, if it's closer to that southwest corner, which is on a slope east to west as you go down Bengal, and as you come from north to south towards Bengal, it, there's a taper there. And I think there will be a little bit of reassurance if in the act of becoming level, it is closer to that southwest quadrant rather than the northeast quadrant.
It is.
Okay. And do you anticipate approaching more the northeast quadrant or the southwest quadrant?
The southwest quadrant because the, if you look at the grading and drainage on the civil engineering from McNeil Engineering, you'll see that we have to pull back all the water from the corners and bring them down the center waterway because there's a 24-inch corrugated pipe that goes under there. And that's where all that water collection is stored until it percolates out at a rate given the civil engineering. We could not connect to the, through an orifice to the existing public storm water system. We could, but the, the engineering department of Cottonwood Heights suggested that if we can retain it on-site, please do so. We've done that in the past. It's worked well for us and we're going to continue to do that. But yes, you are correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the commissioners? Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Okay, I will now open it up to public comment. I will start with the, the comment cards that we've received. Certainly not limited to those that we've received, but we'll start with those. And as a reminder, you have three minutes, and it is only three minutes. When the buzzer hits three minutes, please discontinue. Okay?
Chair, can I ask just a clarifying question from our recorder? Tiffany, do you want anybody who, let's say somebody hasn't filled out a public comment card yet, but they decide to come up and make a public comment? Would you like them to fill out a form with their information to still provide or? Okay, so if we can make that request, if, if people haven't filled out a form yet, by all means, please still feel free to come up and speak. If you can fill out one retroactively, they're on the sidewall, just right over, right over there. And that just helps our recorder staff. So, thank you. Thanks.
Okay, thanks. Okay, I will ask Kelby Kuhn to come up.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Kelby Kuhn and I live just three houses from the proposed development. I want to address two key concerns: density and why this project does not fit the character of our community. This 10-unit townhome proposal is not appropriate for neighborhood commercial zoning. NC zoning was never intended to accommodate high-density residential development like this. Zoning Code Section 193710 states that the NC zoning is meant for small-scale commercial services, not high-density housing. General Plan Section 3.1 prioritizes land-use compatibility, ensuring that the commercial zone properties do not disrupt established residential areas. Subdivision Code Section 12830 explicitly requires subdivisions to align with the character of the surrounding development, which this project fails to do. The developer is exploiting a zoning loophole by labeling this as a live-work project, but in reality, this is a high-density residential development disguised under commercial classification. It is a project where properly zoned under multifamily housing regulations, it would be subject to stricter density restrictions, which the developer is now trying to bypass. I'm not opposed to development. Growth is necessary, but it must be consistent with the surrounding neighborhood. The areas in our community that have denser housings are zoned as R-2-8, which allows duplex-style housing that fits within the character of the area. The proposal, however, goes beyond the density threshold and does not align with the existing R-2-8 zoning patterns in nearby residential areas. If this property truly is for housing, it should be rezoned to R-2-8 and ensure that it fits within the surrounding community and maintains balance between commercial and residential uses. As a mother of two young children, ages three and five, I am deeply concerned about how the high-density project will increase traffic, reduce safety, and disrupt the quiet residential character of our neighborhood. I moved here specifically because of the single-family, low-density duplex homes that define our community, and this proposal threatens that balance. I urge the planning commission to deny this project as proposed. I urge the planning commission to deny this project as proposed because it is not suitable for NC zoning and does not reflect the density of surrounding neighborhoods. However, if residential development is truly the goal, then the developer should follow the correct process and seek rezoning to R-2-8, which would be more appropriate and consistent with the nearby community. This decision is not about stopping development, it is about ensuring responsible growth that fits within the character of our neighborhood. I ask the planning commission reject this proposal in its current form and require any future development to comply with the appropriate zoning regulations.
Thank you. I'm going to remind everyone.
Please no clapping.
We'll have to, I mean, it, I don't want to wrap up and not have public comment, but there are rules that need to be followed. Thank you. Next, Ellen Burrell.
Thank you for the opportunity to address the planning commission. I appreciate all the service that you give to our community. Thank you very much. I'm here tonight because there is a challenge, a few challenges that I see that I want to make sure are considered in your deliberation. In reviewing the code, I see that there is a contradictory language between 19.27.010, purpose of neighborhood commercial, and Code 19.37.030, conditional uses. While live work is listed in a long laundry list as conditional use, this project's design of adding a small room on ground level that may or may not be used by the resident for their livelihood, which could possibly be commercial in nature, the language in of 19.27.010, and I quote, "The neighborhood commercial zone is intended to protect and enhance neighborhood commercial areas by promoting the concentration of businesses that provide convenience goods and services used frequently by local residents." That to me is pivotal language. What has been described here tonight is not convenience goods and services used frequently by local residents. The developer himself has stated that these units will not be used interacting with the public. So that for me is a direct contradiction to what appears in the code. This zone provides for scale and character of development that is consistent with pedestrian orientation and which tends to attract and promote a walk-in clientele. That stands in direct contradiction to what's been described about this project tonight. So none of these units provide convenience goods and services used frequently by locals nor pedestrian orientation, which tends to attract and promote a walk-in clientele. Without sidewalks within the project and on Bengal Boulevard, we already know it to be an unsafe boulevard. This boulevard is used by our children to get to an elementary, middle, and high school. There is nothing in the Conwood Heights City Planning Transportation Five-Year Master Plan or any plan that we have that addresses a safer condition for walkability along this segment of Bengal Boulevard. So to add all the additional vehicular trips that will be added with these 10 units, likely, you know, you'll be doing the traffic study, but it may be 40 to 60 additional trips every day. This only adds to the danger on, on Bengal Boulevard. And so I, I would like to urge the commission to consider that, while I love the concept of work-live units, I'm so glad that our society is going to that and they have many benefits. And I think what has been built on Fort Union Boulevard, the work-live units there, that's zoned mixed use. So that is, we're talking about neighborhood commercial, very different. And the other main thing is Fort Union Boulevard has transit, it has bus transit. So denser housing works on Fort Union Boulevard.
We're at time, we're past time.
Thank you very much for your time tonight.
I can't, I cannot, I can't see the clock and I thought.
It was kind of glitching where it was just flashing at five seconds for, for a while. So I don't know if, is there a setting we're aware of that may need to be changed?
I'll keep an eye on it. I'll, I'll keep an eye on it. Thank you.
We also will too. I just, it was kind of glitching.
I just really wanted to make sure I left you with the point, that Bengal used to have bus transit, which would have made it.
We need to wrap it up. Thank you. Okay, next. Johnny Matic, sorry, my apologies.
No worries. Good evening, everyone. Thanks, thanks for all you do. I had, I had a written statement, but as I was pulling up into this building, I needed to use the restroom. And I went into the restroom and the lights were off. And as I walked in, the lights turned on. And as I went in to wash my hands, it was a solar-powered sink. This city has values that, I was part of this city back in, you know, '04, '05, '06, when we started to separate into a city. And we set a standard better than Mill Creek and Salt Lake City. And to have a developer come up here and suggest otherwise is extremely frustrating. And to not be prepared with something other than for legislative purposes is extremely frustrating. So that fired me up a little bit. My concern is, I live in the circle right there in Oak Shadow. I've been living there for five years. And this is not going to obstruct my view. It is going to cause problems of safety. I work in education. I leave my house every morning at 6:00 AM. This road right here, I get to see kids going to Brighton High School, and there's all kinds of pedestrians on that bike lane. We're going to put 20 trash cans out there that lift by the front of the arm from Ace Disposal, that are going to make sure that they're tight and everything. I already struggle not seeing little kids by the preschool where there's just four trash cans out when I drove out tonight. Setting this up as a standard for Conwood Heights City is a disaster, especially this part of Conwood Heights. The light pollution, back to my idea on the pollution that we are concerned about as a city, light pollution is a thing. Pollution of trash cans out three weeks? Come on. We all fill up our recycling bins after three weeks. There's going to be a necessity that requires things that need space. And this unit, 10 units, does not provide space for safety, for pollution purposes. And I really urge this commission to, to shut down this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Mitch Longson?
Good evening, commissioners. Thank you for your time. I'm here to just raise a brief concern from the perspective of the neighboring LDS church, of which I'm a member of the bishopric there. And so we just wanted to bring one item to the commission's attention related to parking that I have not heard raised. We heard concerns raised about the Oak Shadow parking and a potential condition for signage on that road. But we would just ask for consideration of a similar condition if this project is to go forward for parking at the LDS church neighboring. We think the same concerns are there that would exist on Oak Shadow, that, that visitor parking could easily be channeled to what many perceive as, as public parking in the church lot. And would ask that the commission consider condition of signage and of course enforcement of that signage. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Jade Velasquez?
Good evening, commission. My name is Jade Velasquez. I'm here with my husband Gabriel Velasquez. And we lived directly west of the planned development on Oak Shadow Circle. I came tonight to give my, my peace of mind to you guys and let you know how I feel. But I just was really impressed with the last discussion that I heard in the business meeting. You see what we see. This project doesn't make sense. The applicant himself said, this is residential. This is a home office. It's a 108-square-foot room in the basement that he described as a small bedroom. My walk-in closet is bigger than 108 square feet, and I would not hold a meeting in there. The concerns that you've brought up about garbage are concerning. The concerns about fire, what we're seeing in California, that level of density is extremely concerning to me. The director himself said that there are a lot of subjective standards that are being applied tonight because our code has not met where we're at with this development. The conflict between neighborhood commercial and what is being described as a residential high-density unit, we are using a conglomeration of different things that don't make sense. So any robot could come by and say, yes, it fits this and this and this and this of the code. But your job as commissioners is to say, does this make sense as it fits in with the rest of the community? I did want to point out that we do have to have the garbage cans inside of the garage. That was a condition of the project. So while I appreciate that he could park a Tacoma in there, I don't think that a Tacoma, another vehicle, and garbage cans would fit in there. I think that this sets a dangerous precedent for the live-work approach. And I appreciate Councilwoman Burrell's comments about how that does not fit in with the code. Using these subjective standards, the one piece that is missing from the program, you know, having lived there for many years, we will on average get 12 to 20 inches of snow in a snowstorm. And as I think the city calls us a Level 4 street, we'll call it a Level 10. We get like last, last service of being able to get out of there for snow. I really doubt that there's enough landscaping to hold all of the snow that will come along that driveway. And for the safety of those residents and for the safety of us, I urge you to reject this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeff Chatlin, Chatlin, sorry.
I made notes this time. This is a bad idea. This is point 48 acre shoving 10 units. You've got to be kidding me. Sorry, this is random notes I took from the developer lender, I'm not sure what his title is. College student. So I don't think we've heard the price. I'm not asking for the price. Comparing this to Tavachi at 2.5 million, what a joke. This is not comparable to Tavachi. I've been in this business 30 years. To, to even imitate Tavachi is not unreal. Conwood Heights has been taken advantage of. I live next to Canyon Center. And let me tell you what's happened there. It's a ridiculous development. And I, my name's shown up a dozen times in these meetings. And the CCNRs that the named applicant represents, that's their rules. And that's too bad. Those rules are made up by himself. The CCNRs and the HOA is controlled by himself. It's his rules. It's not people that live there. They'll turn it over when X amount of units have been sold. At what price? We don't know. This is not an experienced developer. This zone doesn't exist. The snow is going to be pushed onto Bengal Boulevard. It's not going to be stored in some little small compartment. David Weekly in my neighborhood pushes it out into a public road. They don't care. Their CCNRs don't have a rule and regulation to store snow. Go on Canyon Center and on a garbage day and look what's out there. It's 50 cans. That's on our street. When the wind blows, get out of the way. I walk my dog there every other day. Running out of time. The setback is ridiculous. The code doesn't exist. The slope and elevation, a couple of feet. Try 40 feet at Canyon Center. It's called historic elevation. And it was dreamed up by a developer who misled the residents. And this is going to happen again.
Thank you. Robert Farnsworth?
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. I want to take my few minutes and talk about the Neighborhood Commercial Zone 193710 and its purpose. The code reads, "The NC zone is intended to protect and enhance neighborhood commercial areas." This plan decreases the neighborhood commercial areas. It's taken an existing bank of 2,320 square feet, replacing it with 10 small offices totaling 1,080 square feet. That's a reduction of over 53%. That's not protecting or enhancing, is it? Further, it reads, "By promoting the concentration of businesses that provide convenience, goods, and services used frequently by local residents." This application does not meet these standards. The Smiths across the street is a concentration of businesses that provide goods and services that are used by local residents, not this proposal. This is the code. In fact, employees are not allowed in the home offices, essentially by the plan. Neither can any consumer, right? Your municipal code, our municipal code, defines a home occupation in office. "Any use conducted entirely within a dwelling and carried on by one person residing in the dwelling unit, which use is clearly incidental and secondary to the use of the dwelling for purposes and does not change the character of the dwelling for residential purposes." Guess what? That just described these home offices. They're not live-work. Okay, getting back to your code, the, the zoning code provides for a scale, character, and development that is consistent with the pedestrian orientation and which tends to attract and promote walk-in clientele. We already heard. Doesn't happen. This doesn't meet the code. This is an urban setting development, trying to throw it next to our neighborhood in Wasatch, off of Wasatch and Bengal. Further, "Development within this code should maximize the human-scale elements while providing a sensitive transition between three uses, or these uses." Simply put, a 20-acre or a 20-unit-per-acre density shouldn't be sitting next to a low-density R16. And finally, the code finishes, "Including the provision of adequate and properly-sized parking facilities." This app, plan does not appear to be ADA compliant. It needs to be compliant. Now, ADA requires at least one stall. And it also says, "If there are fewer, four or fewer spaces, it needs to be van-compliant." That requires an eight-foot access aisle. It's not on the plan. There's no room on the plan for an eight-foot access aisle. That's ADA compliant.
Thank you. Those are all the cards I have, or the papers with names on it, which does not mean others can't. But please go ahead and step forward if you'd like to make public comment, just step forward. And, oh, you'll have to wait, sorry. And if you'll please state your name, and then if you could, please fill out afterwards.
I wasn't aware of that, so I'll be happy to do that.
No problem. Yeah, that'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you for the commission and their time to let me speak tonight. Some of the points that have already been made.
Sorry to interrupt you, but could you please state your name?
I'm sorry, Paul Hatfield, and I live on Oak Shadow Circle.
Thank you.
A lot of the points that have been made were points I was going to bring up. But I would just like to say that the limited time we had when the plans were given to us on Thursday, and looking at those, it seems to me that this proposed development is fundamentally incompatible with the single-family homes that are in the, in the area. Your own general plan says, "Any new development shall preserve the neighborhood character and complement the existing build environment." It absolutely does not. I would also like to address the snow removal. I live at the very end of Oak Shadow Circle, and I've lived there for 26 years. Over half those times, the snow removal is pushed into my, the front of my house. And there have been times that that snow has been there until late May, early June. Sometimes we have been out as far as eight feet and six foot high. Now, yes, that's a complete roadway, but I just did a quick calculation here. If we have a four-inch snowstorm on his driveway, he's going to need to plan on putting 36 cubic feet of snow on that, at the end of that driveway. It's not going to fit. Absolutely is not going to fit. So to the, to the point that the snow is going to get pushed out on Bengal Boulevard, you're not going to have any choice. On, on a, on a lean year like we've had this year, sure. But in years past, simply as.
On, on a, on a lean year like we've had this year, sure, but in years past, simply isn't going to happen. I would also ask that, by the way, I'd like to say I'm not opposed to development of that lot. I think that the development is essential, and I know that building for housing needs to take place. But if this project is allowed, I would absolutely ask the Commission to require a fence to be put on the Oak Shadow side. And one more thing I'd like to make, comment on the, on the height. It is correct that the bank height is just almost 27 feet, but it's also got a pitched roof. The developer's planning on putting a flat roof at 30-foot high. That definitely affects the, the site of some of the lots in that neighborhood. And my last point is, if I can find it, I'd like to suggest that this, this proposed development does not adequately provide measures for taking into account the NC zoning and the adjacent R1-6 family. My comment is that I would like you to reject this proposal at this time. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Go ahead, step forward.
My name is Marsha Whitney, and I live on 35th, or I moved here 10 years ago from out of state, 3500. Right near that intersection of Bengal and 35th. There's so much traffic and problems there with that intersection. And I have never seen cars parked on Bengal. I'm used, you know, like in front of Smiths, I don't see anybody parking there for any period of time. So I'm concerned about the parking at this particular, and it also does not match the neighborhood by any means. And we are already going through, I live on the east side of 35th, near Somerville, Summer Hill. We're already going through all those new big giant homes that are being built by Ivory Homes that don't match anything. And there's nothing we can do about that. But I would think that parking should be, there's just not enough parking for the amount of people. Each unit will probably have two cars. That's 20 cars coming in and out. And they're coming in and out really close to that intersection. When cars are coming, they're not even stopping at the intersection. They come around and they're going to go, I don't know, they come around and they go right down west onto Bengal. But right there's the church, which traffic is only on Sundays, so that's not so bad. And I was worried about people parking in the, in the church parking lot, but I see that's been addressed. So my main concern is just not, too much traffic. And it does not, you know, meet the neighborhood. I don't know about the codes here. My background is real estate, but I have no idea really about the codes here. I just don't like having something that looks like that in our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Are anyone else who would like to make public comment?
I'm just going to bring around the comment form. Good evening, members of the Council. My name is Sean Cox. I live directly north of the proposed development. I'm here tonight because I'm deeply concerned with the impact this project has on my family's privacy, the density of our neighborhood, and the overall character of the community we've built. As someone who has lived here for years, I've come to value the peace and privacy of my home. This project's design, with its dense layout and the proximity to my property, threatens to take that away. I worry about the noise, the increased activity, and losing my family's privacy and our personal It's a hard thing to put into words, but knowing that our backyard will now be overlooked by new neighbors is unsettling. While the proposal includes a commercial office, it's clear that the focus is cramming as many residential units as possible into this space. This isn't what neighborhood commercial zoning was meant for. These zones are supposed to serve the local community with low-impact commercial uses, not high-density housing that adds strain to our infrastructure and changes the character of the neighborhood. This proposal just doesn't fit with the existing neighborhood, or is defined by single-family homes and a thoughtful balance of space. This development feels rushed and outplayed, prioritizing density over throughout, over thoughtful integration, sorry, interconnection, sorry. It's not just about the rules and zoning, it's about preserving the unique sense of community we've worked so hard to find and build. In conclusion, this project doesn't align with the needs or character of our neighborhood. It disrupts privacy, crams too much into too little space, and misses the mark on what makes our community special. I respectfully ask you to reject this proposal and to prioritize developments that reflect our shared values and vision. Thank you for listening and for your commitment to our community.
Thank you. Anyone else who would like to make public comment? Please step forward. Go ahead.
Hi there. My name is Ryan By. I live on Mountain Estates. I want to thank my fellow citizens and neighbors who spoke so well and came so well-prepared to this meeting. I want this project rejected as well. It does not fit the character of our community in that neighborhood, low-density versus high-density. I also feel that the developer, in stating that they need to put garbage cans on the street, it is simply being disingenuous. There's not enough space for a garbage truck to go into that deadhead and come back. So that's just, you know, if they're being disingenuous on the first date, they aren't going to get better over time. I don't believe that, I heard that Unified Fire had approved this, but I have a tough time also believing that a fire truck could make it into this property and turn around. So I would like a matter of public record if they could proceed for a letter from Unified Fire to actually be made part of public record. So, thank you, and thank you for your service, thanks to my, my neighbors, but I hope you reject this wholeheartedly in its current form. I totally believe in development, but smart and sane and safe. This does not fit our code, is not smart, is not sane, and is not good for our neighborhood. Thank you very much.
My name is Randy Gottberg. I'm a resident of the neighborhood. There have been a lot of stories told, a lot of talking about the zonings, and I'm, I'm not qualified to talk that side, but I think it's been eloquently done. What I wanted to do is point out some, well, to call it bluntly, I think you've been fed a fairy tale. The birds chirp, the sun shines, it never rains, the wind never blows harshly, there's no, no leaves to have to be picked up. Those, those issues that have been brought up are real, and they're part of the human nature that we have to deal with. But there are some things that I'm going to say flat out, and it's not going to be nice. I think that you've been fed a lie, a lie by deception and omission. He's told you the truth. Garages are 21 by 21. He can put a double-cab, six-foot-bed Tacoma with a hitch in that garage. You're not going to get a second one in there. You just can't turn there. You pull down that driveway without going into a garage, you're backing back up because there's no room for two cars to comfortably go back and forth, side by side. Anybody parks in there, they're going to want swing room for their doors. Okay, they've effectively dropped, blocked that whole parking lot. There's supposed to be offices downstairs? Where's that in the planning for parking for the rest of the, the tenants? Because there's supposed to be 20 parking spaces. Oh, well, you've just given them away. Or where is that guy going to park? Okay? Trees to provide privacy for the tenants and for the, the neighbors next door. That's a lie by omission. It's for the tenants and it's for the developer. The building's 30, almost 30 feet, and they're going to put in 32-foot, 32, 33-foot trees? Okay. The neighbors here are already disgruntled, they're losing their, their vision of the mountainside, which they bought when they moved here. That was part of the sale. Okay, now they're going to lose more. Okay, the peak of that building's been brought up. That's all they've talked about. The rest of it's a lie by omission. Okay, the one big thing I want to say is that there was a city commissioner, Bob Warnock, lived over here on the corner on Mountain Estates. He had the zoning changed for multifamily dwelling units on the east side of that street. Okay? There was no allocation for the rest of everybody else, but it's become a nightmare for us to pull in and out. Parking on both sides, you can get one vehicle down, and God forbid, if an emergency vehicle had to come in. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name's Mike Halligan, and I'm a resident here in Cottonwood Heights. I, like so many other people, agree with all the comments that have been said and the concerns that have been raised. There's been a discussion about overflow parking on the street. And I think if you look at the street as it's striped right now, you would start parking in the bike lane. And so you'd have to re-stripe and reallocate where the lanes of traffic are to accommodate that bike lane. So you put people that are parking in a dilemma. Do you park in the church parking lot? Do you park in the bike lane? There really isn't a good solution right now. So I think that if you're going to move forward, you have to address where does that parking take place if it's on the street? And how does that impact other uses on that street as well? I think the massing is wrong. It was a question, or somebody brought up about the peak of the, the bank, but that tapers off. And when you put something of that size in that massing in that space, that changes the entire neighborhood character. That neighborhood and all the neighborhoods around it are surrounded by a two-story residential. Even Smiths has a lower roofline than what's being proposed. So I'd like to keep that in mind. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Chad Pangborn, and I also live in Cottonwood Heights here, on Danforth Drive, which is about three, three blocks north. The only concern that I recognize that it hasn't been brought up is that we have a very difficult intersection right there at 3500 East and Bengal Boulevard. There's a crosswalk there for the schools. And already we have an issue with people not stopping for that, for that intersection. I think it is, if we start to put parking into what's in the bike lane, like the former person talked about, and garbage cans on certain days, blocking that access and blocking that vision, we're going to have a child hit. And I think that that's something that none of us in this room want to see. Nobody wants to stop for the stop sign, but a child, I don't think we can, we can live with that. So that's the only comment that I have.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Thank you for taking the time to listen to us. My name is Karen Cordner, and my husband is Paul Hatfield. We live at the end of Oak Shadow Circle, and yes, we experience snow in front of our house a lot. And as he mentioned, not this year so much. Sometimes we have to push it out of our driveway. But, but what I wanted to address, which, which the gentleman before me did so succinctly, is the corner of 3500 and Bengal. It's horrible. There's, nobody stops there. They roll through. I have two dogs that I walk all over the, all over Cottonwood Heights, you've probably seen me. And I, and I fear for us when we have to cross any street with a stop sign. I'm grateful for those orange flags, I use them. But, but people still try to run me over. So we're going to add, I don't know how many people are going to live in, in these 10 units, but they're all going to have vehicles. I ride my bike up and down Bengal Boulevard, and it's an incline, and it's hard. But, but what if somebody's coming out? They don't see me. I'm just a little old lady on her bike with her two dogs. And I've got this high-density unit, people that are just out of college, apparently, and they're going to just take me right out because they got so much to do, and they had to come, get out of college and move back home to Cottonwood Heights. In my opinion, I want, I would like to see something there, something more congruent with, with, with the Cottonwood Heights and what I've seen since I've lived there for 30 years. And this, this isn't it. This, this just isn't it. So I, I urge you to decline this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, great. Thank you. I'll close public comment time, and I just, I want to say how much, I think I'll speak for all of us on the Commission. We appreciate people coming out to speak their, what they're thinking, to attend the meeting, so we appreciate it. Thank you. Okay, we'll move to deliberation now. Where, where do we want to start?
I can start, yeah.
Okay, thanks.
So I, I wanted to dig in a little bit deeper, just because live-work, based on current code, is not clear enough. And we have to rely on the applicant and their intention of live-work, which I don't believe is conducive to what neighborhood commercial, and based on what the applicant mentioned, it's very much so focused on that one unit and not the impact of the neighborhood, which concerns me. And I pulled up neighborhood commercial, which encourages enhancing local amenities, promoting walkability, encouraging mixed use, limiting impact, fostering community. And unfortunately, this development is really focusing on how, you know, a home office at home, not live-work. You know, live-work means that you're going to actually have cohesiveness with the, with the community. So I pulled up some of the adjacent communities as well, and most communities have a 300-square-foot live-work requirement component. So I could see live-work working here very well if we had a 300-square-foot, you know, base level, creating a sense of place to then promote what our guidelines show as enhanced local amenities, promoting walkability, encouraging mixed use, limiting impact, and fostering community. We also have in neighborhood commercial, a PUD requirement, which requires three acres or more to be just multifamily. And the applicant communicated that this is basically a multifamily development, not a live-work development, because it has no impact to the adjacent neighborhood. So with that live-work component, you know, it has to have the residential component, it has to have a commercial component, and that integrated use. So if we were to approve this, I would want to look at some pretty robust compliance issues, which, you know, I think we need to really observe how this is going to meet the neighborhood commercial intent. And I've got some ideas as far as deed restrictions go. You know, I think containing trash on-site is an important component. I think containing all snow removal is a component. I think making sure that there's cohesiveness to then foster that community component is, is important as well. Neighborhood Commercial is not mixed use. It's not a mixed-use development, like he had mentioned, some of our other adjacent parcels, I'm sorry, not adjacent parcels, but other live-work details that we've had in Cottonwood Heights. So for me, you know, I, I think we need to look at a lot of those different components and, you know, potentially require a minimum of 300 square feet for commercial use, create the commercial component. You know, ADA, I think, is such an important component for a commercial development. A minimum of one ADA space, I think, is so incredibly important for a commercial use. So, you know, I love Neighborhood Commercial developments. They need to be thoughtful. They need to, once again, foster community, limit the impact. You know, I'm not hearing a ton of "not in my backyard" people here. It sounds like there's a lot of people that are wanting development there. They probably don't want a vacant bank. But I think we need really intentional development in this space. These infill developments, as you can see on the zoning map, this is the only Neighborhood Commercial on the north side across the street from Smiths right here. And then the remaining Neighborhood Commercial then is found down at 2700 East and Bengal Boulevard as well. So, you know, I think if the applicant can meet some of those needs of Neighborhood Commercial, not multifamily development, which is required in three acres or more, but live-work, which creates a Neighborhood Commercial component, I feel comfortable with a project like that. So there's going to be a lot of bumpers that I would, I would state I would want to require in this.
So I hear what you're saying, and I had similar, similar thoughts in terms of the, the work component does not sound like it's, it's work, but it's not commercial. You know, I mean, it's, it's a workspace, but it's not, it's just really an additional bedroom.
Yeah, and he had even mentioned that the CCNRs are actually going to not allow for any compliance to meet what our Neighborhood Commercial Code will state. So no one can really come to the development and conduct business. So it has to be the patrons living in the space. And I, I think that that, the CCNRs, they would be in breach of the CCNRs right now to meet the needs of Neighborhood Commercial, from what I was understanding from the applicant.
I would agree.
Well, we see that there are, I mean, we've, we've known for some time that as Cottonwood Heights incorporated that there are gaps in the code, things we inherited from Salt Lake County that we're, we're mending as we find. And this lot is just exceptionally small compared to the other two projects, at least I've been involved with, that, that we tried to accomplish some of these goals. I share your concern about the, those same, those same issues. I, a lot of my questions were resolved. I feel better about the garbage situation. I don't think it's ideal. I don't, I still, the, the, where the vehicles are going to go continues to concern me. I just did some back-of-the-napkin math, and just like a normal F-150 with two of those in there, that gives you five feet of space between the left side, the, between the vehicles on the right side, and that includes what has to accommodate the garbage cans. And that's a squeeze, at the very least. I'm going to stand by my ADA concerns. I, I am anxious for us to see these kind of products. And just as a reminder, for those who've been there for a little while, that, that lot used to be a great place to ride your bike in the early 80s. And, you know, there are people, I mean, there's probably a couple of you here from Summer Hill that would say, you know, it would have been a great part back in the day, including where some of you live on that circle. So progress happens. So I don't have any concerns about putting something a little higher density than what's there before, what's there right now. And I would also remind us that Neighborhood Commercial would allow a Starbucks, which would include a queue of people lined up down the street, that would be an appropriate use. It could include a Lone Star fish taco place with cars lined up down the street. So when we start talking about traffic and pedestrians and bikes and, you know, we have these, these things pushing back and forth against each other, I think are difficult questions. But when we get a lot this small, we, we start encroaching on one another, and suddenly this stuff gets a whole lot messier. And that's how I would contrast it to the previous projects. To your point, in addition to the fact that we started with a mixed-use zone instead of this Neighborhood Commercial, it's a gap in, in the code. So I, I think I would second Commissioner Steinman that we're going to have to have a laundry list of, of ways to address some of these things if we're going to allow this to move forward from my standpoint.
And I also would second that I'm not comfortable with, I think the waste management needs to be internal. I, I think it's, I'm, it's concerning to put the garbage cans out on, onto Bengal. I just feel that's a safety hazard, that it's already a dangerous street that we've talked about, so, and the snow removal. It cannot go out onto Bengal either. So there's not, not enough space there. It doesn't appear, so. Thank you.
I have a few comments, if I might. I think one of the things that's hard for the community, for the public to recognize is the role of this body. And one of our, one of our roles is to hear comments. Interestingly enough, for us, things like the character of the community, does this make sense in the community, is defined by a set of rules. It's defined by a zone. It's not defined by what we think is a good idea. So we're limited in our scope to the rules that are set. Councilperson Burrell mentioned that her view is that there's a contradiction in this code. It's a contradiction that many of you brought up. Unfortunately, the recognition that there's a contradiction creates a challenge for your argument in that a contradiction must be resolved in favor of the applicant by rule. And that's challenging. If there's a contradiction, the, the law requires that it's resolved in favor of the applicant. So I would agree that this piece of ground, it would be nice if it were not zoned Neighborhood Commercial, but it is. That's the rule. That's what, that's what we get handed. It's Neighborhood Commercial. I would also agree that it makes sense to me that you would, my first note is that you would remove live-work from Neighborhood Commercial. But it's not. It's there. And the challenge I have with a lot of what has been said is that it doesn't, in my view, comply with the rules that were handed to make these decisions. Now, a city council has a different set of rules in their, in their playbook that they can play by, where they get to set the rules. They, they could decide, for example, that live-work doesn't belong in Neighborhood Commercial and remove it. We don't have that luxury. If it's, if live-work is permitted, then we have to approve it. We can't say we don't like it, even if we don't. So I, I think generally what we have to do in a conditional use permit application is decide if there are conditions that we can impose that meet the code. And it's not our option to say we just reject this idea. We may impose conditions, but that's the scope of our work. Unfortunately, here, you'd like to have conditions for things that say, hey, there's a, a bad intersection nearby, and there is. That intersection is, has been a bad intersection for a long time. It's not a good intersection. But that doesn't, that doesn't prohibit, it doesn't weigh even on the applicant's right to build what's permitted by code. As long as he complies with the standards that are codified, he must be granted approval. That's difficult. It's difficult when you don't want something, when you don't see it as being compatible with your view of things. But that is the, that is the role of this body, to make a decision about compatibility with the zone and the code as it exists. We don't get to rewrite it. I think there are enough concerns that it's going to be difficult for us to act on this. I think there are, tonight, I should say. That's my view.
Thank you. Appreciate that. And I would also, I don't know if I'd say second, but it's not the time to say second yet. I would agree with you on more time, I think, could be good for, to, but I also will say, as I say that, to what end does having more time? I mean, I, I mean, what, what do we want to accomplish in that? Or do we want to provide some conditions that to, and then go from, I mean, what, what are we looking to provide more time?
Again, in my view, and based on the findings from the staff, there are, there is no basis to deny the conditional use permit, which leaves you with what conditions will you impose that must be met? So if we are prepared to list the conditions that also comply, you know, that aren't out of bounds for us to, to make, that's where I think we need time.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. And I think we understand that the conditions we can impose, if you will, are ones that are, would be a safety hazard, or those, those kinds of things that, you know, typically we'd look at if there's going to be lots of traffic, those kinds of things. So I think we have to keep that in mind when we're looking at the conditions. And I think we've, we've talked a lot about those. I've documented what I've captured from our conversations as well, if we would want to go through those, or would we want to take time for the next couple of weeks to think through this more and talk about it in our next meeting? Because we do have a meeting in two weeks.
Can I share two pieces of information that may help you answer that question? So the first one, I'm just gonna, this was in the packet. It's just a state code on conditional, on conditions for conditional uses. So as you're thinking about what conditions would be reasonable, keep in mind that the conditions are, conditions imposed need to be those that mitigate the reasonably anticipated detrimental effects of the proposed use. And then it says, you know, these conditions, I'm paraphrasing with, with that, do not require elimination of the detrimental effect. So I don't know if that helps put some, some guidance on what those conditions can be. It does say, "A land use authority shall approve a conditional use if reasonable conditions are proposed." And then it, and then it goes on to explain those. So keep that in mind as you're talking about conditions. And then as you're talking about if you're going to continue it or wondering about that, yes, your next meeting on the calendar is February 5th. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna put the model motions up for all three actions on the screen. There is, me doing this is in no means me rushing you to make a motion. It's just there as a, a resource if you decide to do that. Thanks.
Thanks, Sam.
So from a condition standpoint, I, I strongly believe to meet the needs of community commercial, I think deed restrictions for commercial components and requiring a business license within the space within six months would be important for this type of development within Neighborhood Commercial. Once again, I think this is different than mixed use. I think ADA is a very strong component we need to abide by. I think restricting to onsite trash removal, you know, ensuring that that is contained all on-site, once again, with this being a planned unit development, I believe those conditions will all be sufficient for what we'd be looking at. You know, if there's ways, we, we need to make sure that this is in alignment with Neighborhood Commercial. And I think that that's a very important component that we need to be observing, you know, to your sentiment, Commissioner Shelton. You know, we, we do have to go through an approval process for this from a legal-bound standpoint, but those conditions need to align with zoning code and what the overall intent of that code is, which is very clearly displayed within our code. Those are some of the conditions that I could see right now. I think, you know, some other cities require higher ceilings in all ground level for commercial, for live-work. Those are other things that we can look at as well. You know, right now, we're working on Hillside Plaza and Form-Based Code, which ground-level commercial requires higher ceiling than residential components. You know, those, those conditions are the ones that I would like for us to chew on and, you know, of course, work with staff on refining that. But those are just some that come to mind right now.
I think one of the challenges, I'm sorry, may I speak? One of the challenges there is that you are hard-pressed to set standards when the code does not have one. So ceiling height, for example, the code does not have such a standard. And so you can't really say that the violation of some ceiling height has a, has a detrimental impact because you don't have a standard upon which to set that.
But with this being conditional use, you know, they have to come to us for a conditional use permit, so we can set those guidelines to then ensure that it is congruent with what the zoning is there.
But I think what Sam just read to us from what we can do as conditions is if it's going to mitigate some negative impact, and having higher ceilings is, I hear what you're saying, but I don't think that that falls into that criteria.
Yeah, my guidance will never be specifically like, yes or no, don't do that as a condition, but it would just be, if you are going to make conditions, tie them very carefully and thoughtfully to a finding of what it is mitigating as a condition for the record, because that is important. So that would be my guidance.
And, and I think the mitigation for that side of things is, I don't want to promote non-compliance to live-work in this space.
The challenge is that live-work has no definition in the code. So you can't say they're not complying to something that has no definition. It's very, very difficult. And, and I think if you have something to hang your hat on there, it is the language that, that Mike can adopt as the standard in the absence of one. But that, that standard is sufficiently vague as to not give you much to hang your hat on here either.
Yeah, but I think we've got the root code to be able to reflect back on. And I think root code, basing it on the integration within the neighborhood, and then also making it a core amenity of the neighborhood with a commercial designation, is going to then promote that we need to make this commercially designated, where there is something explicit in the code that states that we now have planned unit developments that is a minimum of three acres that would then allow for just pure multifamily. Right now, it is a pure multifamily component, the way that the applicant is proposing it, which, that is required above three acres in this current. which that is required above three acres in this current code within neighborhood commercial. So I think that, once again, definition wise of live work, we then need to revert back to commercial. And I think commercial use is strongly presented on this and that integration, this is not just a multifamily project. And the applicant's basically saying, hey, we've got an extra bedroom in the basement that you can put a desk in and do an e-commerce. That is in complete non-compliance of neighborhood commercial and live work. I would say this is just a multifamily project that's being presented to us. So for it being just a multifamily project, it, it doesn't, it doesn't sit well with me to approve something where, of course, the last 10 years, we've been working on codes that then require three acres or above for just multifamily. So that's why you have to then reflect, well, then what does commercial component, what does neighborhood commercial component regulate? And what kind of regulations do we have as a body? Which means that we need to make sure that we're servicing the community and very consciously servicing the community in a commercial capacity.
I think the difficulty is that we are not a legislative body. So as we're trying to figure out how to mitigate the incongruence between commercial, this becomes a difficult question that the only questions, the only conditions that we can, can put are if there are detrimental effects. So, and, and that, that standard, you know, when we start talking about, okay, if it goes above a certain height, is it considered a detrimental effect? And we go back to that discussion of heights of floors, is it, would it be a detrimental effect? I would argue that we can make the argument relative to ADA. I think the requirement of a business license, whether a business is being conducted there or not, that has a detrimental effect on the community if that's not identified. I think has a detrimental effect if we are not restricting the trash removal onsite. I think we can, we can require all three of those without, without any, any concern. And I would add the, the five conditions that staff outlined that are not before us. I'm not sure if you have those listed out.
And before we jump, I'd like, can I add maybe a couple of more that I also noted was, a condition was fencing on the west side, correct? I think we talked about-
Yeah, let me pull up the ones we started with and then you can see what's in there and what you might want to add. And just, just tell me if you want me to go back to this slide or others. I'm happy to-
I don't think you addressed fencing in yours, so let's-
I didn't. So yeah, make sure if that's something you want to do.
Can I, let me go through my laundry, my, my list of things, because I've been in, and if we have one place where it's at. So ADA compliance, signage in the church also about no parking, fencing. I think we're covered on fencing on the north and east sides. It's the west side on the circle that I believe fencing is needed.
What is your, what's the condition that you would?
That the fencing's required.
Do you, if you're gonna add that, maybe consider doing a height, just so that it's a height for that fencing that you want to see there?
Minimum height?
Yeah, just so that it's not left to determination of, yeah.
I would say it'd be six foot so that it would discourage people parking on that circle and then coming directly into the rear or the, I guess it'd be the front door.
You probably have some concern about the corner being that-
Well, they have to be, I think from a setback from the corner, it's gotta be four foot for, I don't remember how-
Yeah, so the clear view triangle at an intersection of roadways, 30 feet. So they would have to obviously comply with dropping fence down to not create visibility.
If we, if you were to put up a chain link fence that's six feet, it's not as aesthetic. But you can see through the fence and it still could be six foot and you could still see the intersection, so it wouldn't obscure-
That's a question I'll defer to my superior on.
So that begs the question of what are you trying to mitigate with this fence? Is it privacy? Is it visual? Is it access from Bengal Ben Cove?
It's, for me-
Or from Oak Shadow Circle, sorry, I have too many projects on-
For me, it would be to discourage people parking on the, on that cul-de-sac and then entering directly into the property that have to at least walk around it. And it would discourage them then from parking there. That would be the idea.
So just keep the, keep those in mind. You know, you can limit gates if that's, if that's the desire is, is access management, then that's one type of fencing, you know, requirement. If it's privacy and visual buffering, that's a, you know, maybe a different kind.
I, I think we need to really focus on the commercial component on ground level. I, I think regulating and, you know, putting 300 feet as a minimum requirement for ground level commercial, I think is something that mitigates the potential non-compliance and encouragement of non-compliance for the commercial, or for the neighborhood commercial here.
How would you phrase that?
Uh, requiring a minimum of 300 square feet of commercial per unit.
And what are we trying to mitigate?
The, the non-compliance of the live work or commercial component of this project.
So for me, live work can be defined as a desk with an office. And someone who does that is not out of compliance with the code as I read it. Now, there are certainly contradictions in having live work being on that list. I, I would agree with that. But since it is on that list, I don't know how you can say some kind of live work doesn't comply.
Because they're applying for a conditional use. So there needs to be conditions that we put in place for that condition, conditional use permit for this. So from a neighborhood commercial component, you can then discern that multifamily versus neighborhood commercial is a clear delineation. So we have a multifamily compliance within this code.
We also have a live work in this code.
Correct. Correct.
Hope you understand why 300 feet is more compliant than 100.
That, that's going to be the commercial regulation within ULI. So that's Utah Land Institute's definition of commercial space.
So you feel like we've got, we've got a leg to stand on with that number, 300 square feet versus 100?
Absolutely.
Let me, let, let, I have that written. Let me just go through the rest. So internal trash management onsite, adequate space for snow storage, or increasing the space for snow storage, it's not adequate now. The business license requirement. And then this latest one about the 300 foot on the first floor, which I'm, I'm struggling with a little bit in terms of that, how that is mitigating anything negative. I mean, I hear, I mean, I hear what you're saying. I, I mean, but I'm, I'm still struggling with how, what is it we're, what is it we're-
Yeah, I think it's really just mitigating non-compliance for ensuring that each of these are actually live work units. So activating the ground level then allows for better integration into the neighborhood and better integration for the neighborhood commercial component.
Did you get through your whole list?
Yeah, that's my list.
So you, can you add to that ADA compliant visitor parking?
It, it was number one.
And then your fencing addition, fencing on the west side.
Can I ask a clarifying question about the ADA comment? Is that something you'd like us to run by the, the building official to ensure that what's shown is compliant and determine what's actually required? Or is that, are you asking for ADA compliance regardless of what the accessibility standards say?
I would like to see at least one ADA compliant visitor parking spot, and I saw none. So I'd like to see one striped out, show that one person in one wheelchair can visit one place out of these 10 units. I feel like that's reasonable.
Also, do we feel like we need to allow for the, the neighborhood to be able to visit and be patronage to this development? Because right now, there was clear intent that they're, they're not allowed to do so?
Not sure I know what you mean.
So, so meaning, right now, they're not allowed to operate necessarily a company that an employee can work at in that building? Do we, do we want to regulate that or work through that? Because right now, it's basically just a home office component. So the CCNRs do not allow for any employees to be working there.
Well, I think that's also one of the conditions and that were listed as well.
If, you know, again, up to you guys on how you move. If you don't want to do that, make sure you strike that from the list that's here. I'll say that was included because we found that the live work definition they were proposing without additional employees was compliant with code by our reading. And we felt like not allowing additional employees mitigated a negative parking impact. So that was the rationale there. Just remember, that's on this list of five. So if you want to make edits, make sure you specify that.
Just, just one note, they're comparing the other conditional uses. There's not a retail mandate here, even in other uses. Administrative office is a use. Designer, artist, writer, studio are allowed uses. So I think the definition of work can be broad. I don't know that it needs or should require a retail, you know, walk-up element per se. There are other uses that, that could be proposed, fully commercial, that don't have that, you know, that client requirement or mandate tied to them.
Yeah, the, the current state, it restricts it. So by restricting it, no one would be able to do so.
So Commissioner Steinman, I, I don't know if this adds another flan ointment to where your head is going, but I, the, the walkability and bikeability with increased number of vehicles coming out of one, one narrow channel. And I don't know what the, what we would ask as a condition other than adding walkability and bikeability features to encourage pedestrian safety with higher volume of vehicles. And in my mind, that would also allow, if somebody were doing walk-up business, let's say it's a hair salon and somebody is walking from the community to get in there, I, I feel like I'm straining a little, but that would be a need that needs to be met right now. But I wonder if having that walkability, bikeability feature on the frontage would allow for that possibility? Could you live with that?
What, what does that mean? What does that look like? We have required in our review sidewalk connection to the public sidewalks, both from the, the south elevation and from the west elevation. So, so there's full connectivity between the, the units and a pedestrian path on all sides of this development. What, what would need to be enhanced to satisfy that?
I, I think if you think about what you've proposed with the, with the, the master plan for Fort Union Boulevard, I mean, I think there are versions of that, allowing some discretion for staff and the property owner to say, what, what could that look like? It could be wider sidewalks, it could be a, a more protected sense of a bike lane, using kind of that, that interface of staff with the developer. I have confidence you guys can come up with some fantastic ideas that maybe we're not thinking of right now. And my, my intention in providing that was to stay broad, rather than getting into how many inches of sidewalk and how much landscaping and what type of landscaping. And, you know, I, I think it could be an improvement for what's there right now, when you've got a bank with low traffic and two exits that have wide open visibility, the concerns about children in the neighborhood, a, a church with people walking up and down, people walking up and down with, with dogs, that I think we could do some things to mitigate that. And I, I have a feeling that the applicant would come up with some creative solutions for that in terms of making sure that staff were comfortable with that. You okay with broad on that?
Yes, there will be limitations. If we require additional right-of-way, that, that's an issue because we don't have a standard that, that requires that. We'll, we'll look at it. I understand what you're saying. There's gonna, there's an existing bike lane and sidewalks on, on Bengal and on both sides of this project, so we can take that and try to work with it.
I will also just add, the Fort Union projects were different because our master plan called for that treatment, that grade separated crossing. So we had a little bit more ground to, to call for that. So I would be cautious with what you require there not being in a master plan.
Well, I'm gonna ask for detrimental effect with children in the neighborhood to be pushed pretty hard and the fact that we've had dog walkers and owners of children that, that are in the same vicinity, that I think we can make the argument just as strong as we did there, maybe on slightly different grounds.
Yeah, just make sure you specify the finding very clearly for the record.
I just want to register that I'm comfortable with all five of the staff recommendations of conditions. I'm just, if anybody doesn't have any problems with those, Chair, that may be easy for us to just go into agreement with the addition that you added of similar signage to the front of the LDS church parking per their approval.
Let me give you one objection there. I, I have a challenge personally with saying that public parking is permitted on a public street for everybody unless you live right here. That's challenging for me. I, I don't, I don't think that's, makes sense. So if Shadow or, or Oak Shadow Circle is not compatible with public parking, and it should be made incompatible with it, but we shouldn't discriminate against this set of residents over all others in that.
Are you okay with our time of day discussion that maybe just no overnight parking? Is that-
If it applies universally, so no resident could park-
Overnight.
Overnight there either. And, and you might find a pretty big objection to that idea, so. But it's public and, and to segregate a part, a portion of the public out is my objection.
I, I agree with you on that.
I'm gonna also say I agree with that.
I agree with that as well. I think we, I'm, I could go for overnight, but I don't know that-
I think even overnight would be-
I, I guess that raises the question, do we feel like this is underparked as a development within this zoning?
Not by the standards.
I think that's the challenge we have is, not by the standards, no. I agree that-
And again, we could argue that the standards are wrong, but we're tasked to work with the standards, so.
No, I agree with that. I just wonder, how do we initiate some kind of a review of those standards? I know that's not our, in our realm of responsibility, but it'd be nice to have this reviewed. In these discussions, sometimes I feel like we have the tail wagging the dog.
Yeah.
And I think it's important to consider what we really want to accomplish here, and our code and our zoning should reflect that rather than the other way around.
I think the good news is you'll continue to see zoning text amendments that come to you guys even after I'm not here anymore. I think those planners will continue to bring issues with the code that need to be cleaned up. So your feedback on the issues you identify, I think, is always really helpful.
It is sad though, because the, the tail is the public who comes after the zone has already defined the rules. And they're at a point where they'd like to see it changed, but in the process, it doesn't change there. And so it's hard to get that back to the front end and say, let's make a change so it doesn't happen that way the next time.
I appreciate that. I just wonder if there's some way to invite a legislative review of this, not just the specific one, but just be available to get some feedback on some of these zoning issues.
I think it's also always appropriate for you guys to let council know that there are priorities you're seeing. So I think that that's an appropriate avenue.
All right. How about I go through the list of conditions? I think it, it's good if we do this.
I don't, I don't know where you're going with this. Just, some of these may result in pretty substantial changes to the development layout. So, so you may consider continuing and letting the applicant consider this list of requirements to see what works and, and bring a concept back to you. It's your call.
Well, then that would be, I, I was thinking that maybe that's why we do table this for a couple of weeks, if that feels like it's enough time for the applicant to, to review the conditions that we are, that we are listing.
Yeah, I think legally what you could do is you could continue at date certain to February 5th. You don't have to continue date certain, but you could. And then if for some reason the applicant was, was, you stated to staff, I need a little bit more time to turn this around, we would just notice that on the agenda. We would say this item was continued, it will be continued again. I think we've done that before. So you have that option. If you go that route, you've got your list there of kind of like what the, the items would be, you'd be asking them to address if you can still state that so that it's clear for the applicant what they're responding to. I think that's helpful.
I will, I will do that. And please, everyone, if I've missed something or misstated, let me know. Okay, ADA compliant visitor parking spot, signage in the church parking lot to the east of the proposed- Signage in the church parking lot to the east of the proposed development. Add fencing, six foot on the west side of the development. Internal trash management. Is that enough of a definition of just internal? Okay. Adequate slash increased space for snow storage. Business license requirement for each unit?
Yeah.
Okay. The, I, I have listed the requiring of 300 foot, but I'm still, I'm, I'm still on the fence about whether we can do that in terms of that it does not mitigate anything negative in terms of safety or that kind of thing. I, I hear what you're saying about the, it mitigates in terms of the commercial, but I think we should list it. I think, let's go ahead and do that. And then just in terms of the motions that, or the conditions that staff had provided, number four, we would suggest needs to be updated to remove the signage requirement on Oak Shadow Circle and add signage requirement for the church east of the proposed development.
Can we edit that, Chair, to, to have it read that the portion of the road adjacent to the project prohibits overnight parking? And that similar signage? And obviously this would be a different condition because it's for a private property owner. Offering the adjacent property owner similar signage per their approval?
Which property owner?
The LDS church.
Oh, yeah. Well, I added that the add signage requirement for the church.
So the, the, I don't know that we can require them signage, but we can offer them signage, correct?
We can require the applicant to do signage for the church.
Correct, correct, yeah.
That's what I mean.
Okay.
Okay, yeah.
And are, so are you, are you asking to take out the signage requirement completely for Oak, Oak Shadow Circle or to just no overnight?
I'm not sure we can even do no overnight. I don't think they'd want the harsh to-
City ordinance says that the Public Works Department or City Engineer, they're the same position, but that director, upon finding that there's a safety or concern with on-street parking area, can establish blanket prohibitions like that. But it applies to everybody, not one development over another.
It would obviously be subject to the city engineer's approval as it always was. So that would still be pending him finding that.
We, we could get their input on that based on road width and-
Let's do that.
They were comfortable with it preliminarily, but it was like, you know, subject to their final stuff, so.
So that is a public road adjacent?
Yeah. Sorry, my mic's not on. Yeah, Oak Shadow Circle is a public right-of-way.
Is it a PUD?
I don't know how that property was originally laid out.
Okay, it's a standard subdivision.
Is it? Thank you.
Okay, that's what I have listed. Anything, anything else?
We want to change that or modify that language on the fence for the west side. There is an issue that it can't be six feet. It's gotta be a setback of four feet.
Can we have it be that meeting the city, meeting the city require, I mean, meeting the city requirements?
Always implied, we're comfortable with that as staff. You're also, at this point, not making a motion to approve with these formal conditions. You're kind of giving this as homework for the applicant to look into, is my understanding.
Right, but I think it's good to, it's a, it's a good point, Commissioner Polson.
Great, great point to make. I think it's fine to not specify that, but.
Just so I can say this, I think it's also an assignment for the staff to return to us if these rise to the standards of being appropriate for conditional use. And if, if something we've discussed in your view does not, I-
Oh, sure, the conditions? Yeah, we can do some research into that. That's, that's great.
Is there anything, is there anything I've missed, Commissioner Mills?
I, I've got adding the walkability and bikeability to encourage pedestrian safety with higher volumes of vehicles. And I, I can say it in harsher language, but I think you understand the intent of what I- And again, we're not making a motion. So I'm just, I'm gonna assume that staff and the applicant understand where my brain's at. And then the first three, just as they're written. So the, the first one is a reminder that the, again, Commissioner Steinman is okay with this. The office project is part of this project shall be limited to the use by the tenants of the townhouse, townhouse units without additional employees onsite. Are you comfortable with that? And then two was the site lumens, the lighting situation. And number three was ground mounted utilities being screened. So I, I don't think any of us had any issues with any of those. But those, so those additional four requirements.
Okay.
And Chair, I, I might recommend that we get staff feedback on the February meeting because we already have a very hefty item that's coming to us that maybe in the work session that we could be updated, but that we address the issue in our March meeting. I don't know how you feel about that, Chair, but.
Gosh, I'm not aware of the, the agenda item for February.
The Northern Gravel Pit project is coming back in February.
That was continued date certain to that meeting. There are rules that say no agenda item can begin after, I believe it's 9:30. So when we do the agendas, we try to balance that. There's nothing that explicitly says. My recommendation would be to leave it as an option for the applicant. I think they're entitled to come to that meeting with their project if it's ready with your comments. So I, I don't say, I, I wouldn't say I feel comfortable as staff saying we can't give them the option of the 5th just because we have another agenda item.
We can provide updates regardless. And if we're, if our analysis is incomplete, we'll let you know and we can move it on. But I think it's good to have the option.
To leave it on for February 5th?
Yeah.
Okay.
Can I make a motion? Are you ready?
Please, yes, thank you.
I move that we continue Project CUP-24-019 and SUB-24-008 to February 5th, 2025.
Right.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Mills, second by Commissioner Steinman. Okay, we'll go ahead and do a vote. Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Polson?
Yes.
Commissioner Steinman?
Yes.
Commissioner Mills?
Yes.
Commissioner Shelton?
Yes.
And Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Okay, that, that closes that one for tonight. The next item on our agenda is consent agenda approval of the planning commission meetings from January 8th, 2025. Does anyone have any updates or changes they need to make? No? Okay. Hearing none?
Big shout out to Tiffany who did those minutes and did a great job. We're so grateful. She's like, just been warp speed coming up to new job duties and she's done such a great job, so.
We should know for the commission. Tiffany was appointed formally by the council last night as our official city recorder now.
Oh, congratulations. That's awesome.
You guys are in great hands.
Yeah. Okay, so no changes.
I approve that we approve the minutes.
Great. So we have a motion by Commissioner Mills and a second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great, thank you. Thank you all. We'll see you February 5th. And we need one more, sorry. Commissioner Shelton, okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Commissioner Steinman? Okay, all those in favor?